All right, good evening. I will now call this special meeting in Fayette County Board of Education together, or to order, excuse me. It is May 18th, 2020. The time is 6:03 PM. In pursuit to KRS Chapter 61, notice is hereby given that on May 15th, 2020, the Chair of the Fayette County Board of Education called a special meeting in the Board of Education for Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The Fayette County Public Schools Board will conduct a virtual meeting on Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. This will be a virtual meeting streamed online. The link for the meeting is scps.net/virtualmeeting. This is the Board's monthly regular meeting, but it is especially called meeting because it will be conducted virtually. Please be advised in the state of proclaimed national emergency and under a similar declaration by the Governor, it is not currently feasible for the Board to provide meeting room conditions in the face of COVID-19, a highly contagious virus that spreads between people who are close contact with one another within about six feet. Under these exceptional circumstances in which the Commonwealth of Kentucky is confronting a worldwide pandemic while nevertheless needing to accomplish critical public business pursuant to KRS 61.840, the Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will not provide a primary physical location for public viewing and will proceed pursuant to KRS 61.826 with concessions outlined in the Attorney General's Opinion OAG 20-05. Thus, the public can access the media via the live stream, but cannot be physically present at the meeting. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Daly to take your role call.
Mr. Darryl Love?
Present.
Ms. Kristi Morris?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Is Ms. Daly frozen or am I frozen?
I think Daly is frozen because she's frozen for me too.
Okay.
I'll mark myself present, Ms. Daly. Board Member Daniels.
Thank you.
All right, and I am also present. So we have all five of us present here this evening. So thank you, Ms. Daly. And I'd like to begin by welcoming everyone who was tuned in to watch us this evening on this rainy night. We hope that everyone is safe and comfortable in their homes. And we apologize in advance. We may have some technical glitches with the storms rolling in, but if we do, we will make it work. It's what we're all doing these days. So to begin the meeting, I'd like to ask Ms. Morris to read the mission statement.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Our mission is to create collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate paired to excel in a global society.
Am I frozen? Thank you. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to accept, for the Board to accept the tonight's agenda as it's been presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Love.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes 5-0. Our first order of business tonight is to adopt the proclamation celebrating June as National Internet Safety Month. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Daniels.
A second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Do you have any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Cox so he can begin his report this evening.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin my report, I'd like to add my own welcome to any members of the public who are joining us for tonight's virtual meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask our Chief Operating Officer, Myron Thompson, to present the monthly construction progress report. Myron.
Thank you, Manny. Starting with our STEAM and Success Academy project. And as you know, last week, we went with the contractor and received some favorable news that that project will be moving up. We don't have it reflected here. They will be turning the building over to us in mid-July. So that is good. We will get the students ready for fall in that new building for both STEAM and Success Academy. So we're very excited about that and looking forward to showcasing this facility that has been a very long time coming for our students. So for the month of April, we had a limited amount of building demolition that occurred and a site storm installation was near completion. Concrete curb and gutter began as well. We had miscellaneous structural steel installation that continued, roof installation and tubular lighting installation was roughly 75% complete. Our terrazzo flooring and ceramic tile was complete in Area B and began in Area C, Area A and C. And our ceiling tile and grid began in Area B as well. Our metal stud wall framing continued in Area A. Gypsum board hanging and finishing continued in Areas A and C. In Area B, our first finished coat of paint was completed. Painting also began in Areas A and C. Our geothermal line installation continued. Our mechanical, electrical and plumbing slab rough ends are complete. Our HVAC ductwork and piping continued to 70% completion. Our grills and diffusers began, as well as plumbing and electrical rough ends were continued to about 95% completion. Our exterior sprinkler work completed and interior rough ends are at 95% completion. For this month, we had demolition continued, completed. Our concrete curb and gutter installation will continue, as well as sidewalk concrete. Our foundations for the exterior canopies will be completed, as well as the DGA and asphalt installation that will begin in the front of the building. Our structural steel installation will be complete. Roofing should be completed depending weather. Our GRFC siding installation will begin and window installation will begin as well. Terrazzo flooring installation will be near completion, as well as ceramic tile installation will be complete in the commons area and also begin in Area C. Our ceiling tile and grid installation will continue in Area B and begin in Area C. Locker base installation will begin. Our metal stud wall framing will be complete in Area A and gypsum board installation will be completed. Painting will continue in all areas and our corner guard installation will begin as well. Geothermal line installation will complete. HVAC ductwork piping will be complete, as well as those grills and diffusers. Plumbing and electrical rough ends will be complete. Lighting fixture grid and sprinkler rough ends. So again, they're very ahead of schedule. And just to contrast that with what was happening with our new construction at Brenda Cowan, with all the rain that we're experiencing tonight, it seems like we had a full year of that and we just didn't encounter those delays with this project being under root to begin with. So again, kudos to the contractor and those folks. And I know that both STEAM and Success Academies are looking forward to getting into this new facility. Transition.
If I could interrupt you just for a second, Mr. Thompson, just to ask a question. I know we have July 20th as the revised completion date and that's when we start moving in. If there's any change, and I know our goal is to have the STEAM and Success start the school year next year there. If there's any revision to the instructional calendar for next year, where does, are we, do we still have a cushion there to work with? How much time do we need to move in, basically, is what I'm asking?
We need all of that time, Mr. Murphy. So if we were to start in July, that we would not be able to move in for those two programs. We will need all of that transition period up to the mid-August of the start.
Okay, thank you.
4-450 Park Place. Again, September is coming up for that project completion. Amy, if you could shift to the next page. The work for April, we have demo in the building is complete. Our mechanical demo was 90% complete, as well as electrical, almost 100% complete. Mechanical room demo was 90% complete. Our domestic water was wrapped in. Our new water heater is ready for installation. The demo started in the chase for the steam lines and we had new piping being installed on the fourth floor. We had framing on the fourth floor that's roughly 99% complete. The infills are complete in the building, as well as the remaining building is roughly 99% complete as well. Our drywall is 80% installed and it's being taped. And the drywall on the third floor is roughly 70% installed. Plumbing for the floor drains and vent were installed and inspected. The second and fourth floor bathroom rough ends were installed and inspected, as well as new faucets replacing existing sink locations. We had some electrical excavation and data conduits have been done and inspected south of the building. We had secondary conduits that have completed and inspected from the building to the transformer pad, as well as primary conduits being estimated to within 20 feet of the new pole location. We had a wall rough end done and inspected in the basement. We had our first floor and northeast third floor TV room was done as well. And boring under the Rust Cave Road has been attempted for our data connection over there. We have a cooling tower footer and walls have been placed and we're working on domestic water disconnected and putting in a new valve. For this month, the drywall hanging and finishing will continue on the third and fourth floors. Our mechanical demo and chase finish spaces. We have new piping and we'll continue installation on the fourth floor, as well as the shaft. Electrical demo will be continued as needed. Electrical rough end will continue as well. We have mechanical room demo that will continue. Framing, electrical rough ends, plumbing, all being roughed in. We have new mechanical ductwork and piping that will start. Our site electrical will continue, as well as a new ramp to the TV studio we'll install. We have steel framing that will install for the cooling tower and mechanical equipment will start in the mechanical room. And we have some chillers being delivered today. So project there is moving forward as well. Shifting to our secure festivals, there's no questions on that. We have a snapshot there, again, working through December of this year. We were able to get a little bit of a jumpstart on a few projects with school being out, not having students in the buildings. We have construction ongoing at SCAPA that's roughly 98% complete. Lafayette High School's almost done as well. Morton's at 80% and Harrison Elementary, which is a little more involved project because we're expanding the clinic space there, started. And again, that's at 25%. We've had a pre-construction meetings held at Henry Clay High School, which is our most involved project. It's almost a minor addition due to the configuration of that school and needing to create some additional space. We've met with the administration there, looking forward to getting that project started as of today. And it's going to run for about 14 weeks. Our pre-construction meetings are scheduled at Ashland and Maxwell and we have 11 sites completely done. So again, of the 28 sites, we're almost 50% there and we're trending very favorably to have this wrapped up by the end of the year. And that concludes my report, Superintendent Cox.
All right, thank you, Myron. And that concludes the superintendent's report at this time. I'll return the agenda back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Cox. Next on the agenda is the approval of routine matters. A motion is ordered to approve the minutes of the April 13th planning meeting and the April 27th regular meeting at the Fayette County Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve both of the minutes for April 13th and April 27th.
So I have a motion by Ms. Morris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve all of the consent items on tonight's agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve all the consent items as listed.
I have a motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to point out, I have a question about $24 million for security shades. And I know that that's one of those obligations that we have to meet for Senate Bill 1. But it's just a reminder of, you know, an example of one of those unfunded mandates that we've gotten. But we're about to spend $24 million on security shades for all of our buildings, which is an unfortunate but necessary expense. But hopefully, we can get some relief as far as Senate Bill 1 is concerned in the next few years. But that's my two cents.
The great reminder, Mr. Murphy, you're a great thing to point out to the public. So with that, I will ask for, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And at this time, I will turn the agenda over to Superintendent Cox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first action item this evening is the approval for the Student Code of Conduct for 2020-2021 school year. We had a presentation on the changes by PBI's coach DeeDee Massey during our planning meeting. She's here and available this evening if you have any questions.
Good evening, Board members. Do you have any questions about the suggested changes for the Student Code of Conduct? I believe they were provided to you prior to this meeting.
None.
You did a very thorough job at our planning meeting of going through them.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions for the staff, I will entertain a motion to approve the Code of Conduct as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Code of Conduct as presented.
So we have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Student Code of Conduct as presented by Mr. Love. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Morris. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
All right, thank you, DeeDee. Thank you, Board. The next item for action and your consideration is the acceptance of the CATS offer of assistance. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Director Technology, Mr. Bob Moore, to share more information. Bob?
Good evening. The CATS offers of assistance is an annual acceptance that we do every year. The Kentucky Department of Education provides some funding districts specific to technology. For us this year, it's about $750,000. That is typically used for student devices. We've used some of the money in the past for professional learning, primarily for school staff. And we use it occasionally for a little bit of software. The district match is typically used for salaries for technology department and E-rate funded projects where the district has a 20% responsibility to do basically infrastructure. The Board has to accept this every year and there's a timeframe that we have to do it on after we receive the offer, which is why it didn't come to you at the planning meeting, because we received the offer right after the planning meeting. If there's any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for the staff? Seeing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the FY 20 KETS offer of assistance in the amount of $773,547.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the FY 20 CATS offer of assistance in the amount of $773,547.
So we have a motion by Mr. Love.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Board. Thank you, Bob. Before I move to the next agenda item, I had to step away.
Point of clarification, I didn't actually say motion passes 5-0.
You got it. Apologize.
There you go.
All right, thanks again, Board. Thanks, Bob. Before I move to the next agenda item, I had to step away and I wanted to make a correction. The blinds and shades are $24,000.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just someone watching it may run with 24 million. And.
When I first looked at that, I thought, that can't be right.
You're correct.
So, okay.
Yeah.
There were three extra zeros on there.
There you go. Just wanted to put that out there because someone would misinterpret in 24 million. This is an unfunded mandate. I don't think we got any funds related to improving the safety and security of our buildings as it pertains to Senate Bill 1. But moving back to the agenda, our next item is the approval of the calendar for our new STEM school. We heard from Director of Teaching and Learning, Sariya Matthews, during our planning meeting. But she's here tonight. If there's any questions, and the calendar is to align with the regular start date.
Ms. Matthews, I do have a couple of questions that parents have asked me and so I just want to ask to you. So I want to clarify, so this is 192 days and it includes a experience in June and that is part of the 192 days. So it's not 192 days plus a summer experience. It's 192 days including a summer experience, correct?
So it is actually 192 days plus a summer experience. So total is 205 days.
Okay. That's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 instructional calendar for girls' STEM.
Make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 girls' STEM instructional calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Love. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Sariya. Next on our agenda is our application for the use of non-traditional instruction during the 2020-2021 school year. As you know, we have relied on NTI to keep our students engaged in learning activities, but our schools have had to be closed during the COVID-19 pandemic. We don't know what the impact the virus will continue to have on our schools in the future, but we want to be prepared for any possibility. So we're seeking your approval of our application this evening. At this time, I ask our Senior Director of School Leadership, Sharonda Morton, and Chief Academic Officer Kate McNally to share additional information about our application.
Good evening, Board. Glad to see you all here this evening. We are moving forward with our application for a non-traditional instructional program, which will encompass 10 days in the school year unless something else happens. We have been able to use part of our emergency NTI plan to move forward with this application. So we thank you for your support and we hope that we can continue this support moving forward. Kate?
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Why are we moving forward with NTI, Board members? It is in response to COVID-19. As you approve this application, it does give us the right to use NTI days, but it does not require us to use the NTI. So it is actually giving us an option in terms of, I'm not quite sure how the future will hold for our state, as well as our country, as well as Fayette County public schools. But this will allow us to continue academic content, delivering of our instructions, providing a student teacher interaction.
Yeah, you can see me better. It won't go anywhere for us. You can see me better now.
How will we deliver instruction? Again, this is very similar to our emergency NTI plan as shared with Ms. Morton in that we will utilize both digital and/or print materials. We will be providing student supports in terms of various learning management systems as Canvas, Google Classroom, Remind, ClassDojo, telephone calls, text messages and email messages. There will be access to engaging supplemental resources as well. To support our special education students to the greatest extent possible, each student will be provided the special education and related services identified in the individual education plan. And if during a non-traditional instructional day, a student does not receive an individual education plan service, the Admissions and Release Committee, or commonly known as the ARC, will make an individual determination to decide whether the student requires compensatory education services. This ARC may meet by either teleconference or other means. As well as our English learners and our gifted and talented students and students with a 504 plan, teachers will be modifying content lessons, creating student-specific activities and assignments, individualize the virtual instruction and contact our students regularly. So it's a tailored plan of approach. We will monitor student participation in the non-traditional instructional days through online coursework, project or paper assignments, as well as the participation in instructional activities. And staff responsibilities may include communicating those high expectations with our students and families, planning for standards-based teaching, providing strong instruction virtually, engaging students in digital communities and providing feedback for any grade-appropriate assignments. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Ms. McNally, if you don't mind, I have a couple. On the compensatory education piece, how is that, how does that look in terms of staffing, in terms of funding? Do we have a contingency in place as a just-in-case?
So currently, we do offer compensatory education regardless of non-traditional instructional days. So even during the school year, we may have some students who are in need of compensatory education. So we have those summer plans already in place. So this would be a continuation and extension. And so, yes, we do have some, we do have plans in place. Yes, sir.
Have we seen that the current NTI arrangement has increased the need for those services though? Or has it been pretty constant?
At this point, we've not completed the NTI. But I do know that we should see an increase in compensatory education services.
But we should be able to, we should be, have a capacity to handle that?
Yes. And it's because of the lack of the opportunity of face.
Face-to-face. Yeah, that's expected. Every district's going to have increased compensatory education throughout the country because of NTI, remote learning, trace that distance and you can't provide the services face-to-face as you normally would under ideal circumstances. So that was anticipated and also part of the CARES Act.
Yes.
And that was going to be my next question, was the CARES Act funding to offset that. The other question I had for you related to that is, on number eight, you have that teachers will keep assignment logs to document participation. And I think that came up when we were talking about the last year's. I'm assuming that that can include just traditional infinite campus or whatever traditional format teachers use. Are we talking about something additional?
No, sir. You're on target.
Okay. Okay, very good. And that's, those are the only two things that stood out to me then. And I appreciate clarification.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
I have two.
Yes, sir.
First one, Ms. Morton, you kind of mentioned around the use of NTI days. It's not something that we're mandatory to use. But in the case for those that are listening, if we decide, for example, not to take NTI days and we miss school and we call it like a day out of school, those will actually result in additional days maybe be added to our calendar from that perspective, okay? And I think one of the things that's kind of come out of even the NTI and as we've had to go through and through this cycle, because when we initially talked about, you know, applying and I think there was some discussion years ago regarding this, our philosophy really was, and I think, you know, Superintendent Cox has said that so many times learning happens in the classroom, because we do realize in addition to the learning, the socialization, the whole aspect of food and those types of things. There is a myriad of things that happen when a student is able to actually enter a building versus having instruction from home. So, you know, to be able to have that ability, and I think for us, our philosophy is we want to make sure that we can maintain our students in the classroom, even if sometimes that may mean for us extending a calendar out by a couple of days or a week or so. That, yeah, I think was our philosophy. But in a case of a COVID-19 situation, we know there's extenuating certain. But in a case of a COVID-nineteen situation, we know there's extending, extenuating circumstances. We still have that flexibility from that perspective. Then the second point, my second question, and it kind of piggybacks a little bit on what Board Member Murphy talked about. Um, and I guess that is, you know, and I understand especially, it's, it's hard on uh, all of our students, but our students with special needs. And, you know, we've talked many times around at our, from a district our size, and with the resources that we have, we have a lot of families that choose to move to Fayette County because of the level of service provide. And I guess one of the things that I, you know, and I know maybe it's too early to, to figure out right now or have the data that shows, how well are we really serving our particular students? And if we have to go into another phase of NTI uh, in the fall, how do we better serve those kids uh, and those families?
Very good questions. Um, I do want you to know, it, it was recommended for all school districts to complete an NTI plan by the commissioner. So thus, that's why we're here tonight. Um, secondly, uh, I agree with you that this would only be used in these unprecedented times because of COVID-nineteen. And then third, we are gathering data so that we will be able to um, have a better um, plan in place for if we ever have to go through this again, starting in um, the upcoming school year. So um, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of data being collected right now because we're about to, we're in our last week, yay, of NTI. Thank you, sir.
And, and I just wanna say again, I appreciate all the work that's been done at the district level, and especially uh, from our teachers. At school level, because we've been building this thing as we go. Um, and, and I think it's a lot because people are trying to serve not only our students, but at the same time, they have their families as well that they're trying to take care of and other issues. So um, again, I just wanna say thank you all for your efforts, and especially to our teachers. You all and our parents, thank you for your patience.
Well, Darren, Board Member Love, I wanna echo something you said. Uh, I'm a parent of a special needs, uh, my daughter. And I will tell you, uh, the learning curve is huge, the response has been huge. And you do learn a lot, and there are things that you have to adjust to. But as always in our district, um, our district leadership is always there and open to the things that we need to be aware of. So I, I have found the process to be very eye-opening because it's been very flexible, which, which I've been very appreciative of, um, as they are learning how to go through this. But I, I appreciate the efforts that are being made, and we hope, you know, in the future, we won't have to utilize this like we're doing right now.
Amen.
And I wanna, I guess, I mean, you know, it's interesting. So in the beginning, Mr. Murphy kinda warned us. He was like, there's gonna be a, a learning curve. Cause he, he was, was, he had done this in that district. You know, those first couple of weeks, we came out ambitious. And um, there was confusion and no, you know, like, I didn't know that my kindergartner had an email address, nor did I know how to log into that email address. Um, and so it was learning curve for all of us. But I think now we have really gotten into a good rhythm. We know what works. You know, I also, like Mr. Daniels, have kids who have special services and um, children receiving interventions. And they are um, having their classes and having that help as well. Um, also, you know, I commend our, our teachers recognizing, um, like there was one day a few weeks ago where one of my, one of my children is super social. And she just had a day where she lost it because she missed her friends and, you know, no schoolwork was happening that day. And I was able to really communicate that to her teachers, and they were very supportive. And, you know, the next day, she bounced back and she doubled up and she did both days' work. Um, but I think also, you know, for the staff to really reiterate, and you, we recognize our staff is going through a lot of this emotional as well. You know, I've talked to teachers whose, um, you know, they're homeschooling their children while trying to teach your children. I have talked to teachers whose spouses are unemployed, who are worried about the future. Um, I um, you know, some, some, some teachers are distanced from their spouses right now because of work or um, essential employees and whatnot. And so, you know, I think our FCPS community has really thrived and has really learned, and I think I hope we take these lessons on. Um, and then the other thing I really have been telling parents is really think about your summer and think about your plan. And, you know, again, we don't want it to be a continuation of NTI, but I think a lot of families have established really healthy routines at this point, or at least something that works for them. And to really continue that and to continue that pattern is really my encouragement to families is, you know, whether it's doing the summer reading program or the summer bridge program or whatever you participate in, but kinda doing something to help your kid along, um, and to kinda help your family continue that routine in case we have to fall back into this in the fall or at a later date, so.
I'd also like to thank uh, the Board members for your suggestions when we were developing NTI. We took some of those things, and we are taking those things to heart and using them as we plan for the opening of school year. Ms. Morris, you heard about having additional support with um, tier-one instruction, or having a teacher to explain and someone to, how do, how do you provide interventions and so forth at home? So those things, those, those, those suggestions that you make, we, I wrote them down, we take them to heart, and we're looking at them. How, Mr. Murphy, your words of, of a, a support about NTI and the implementation have been spot-on, just like it's brought up spot-on. It's been a learning cur- high learning curve, and we're doing really well. Um, and as we move forward, it's gonna impact our digital learning and the, the reopening of school. Thank you all very much for all that you support, Mr. Daniels, and also Mr. Lovely. Thank you all.
Thank you. And the, the last thing I will say, and this, you know, it's something that doesn't need to be done tomorrow, but just something to keep on our radar, especially for our schools at the school level, is to think about how we grade. And a lot of those conversations came up towards the end or are coming up now. Um, but if, if this is gonna be something that we have to return to in the fall, um, it would be helpful to be thinking about some of those questions now at the school level. Uh, soliciting input from your teachers, um, and from families on, you know, how can we make sure that uh, grading during this time is not punitive? But how can we also make sure that we're assessing learning as best we can given the circumstances? So um, that's one thing to think about as we look ahead to the fall as well. And that doesn't need to be included in our NTI plan, but it is something we need to keep, keep on the radar.
Well, I, I met with one of the groups this morning, and uh, guess what? That's all in there. Soliciting and finding out information for, for my parents, my teachers, moving forward and looking at those things. So thank you again. We're, it's in our, it's on our radar.
Those are some excellent points, Mr. Murphy. And I don't know if you all caught, I knew you'd start this meeting at six because Dojo reminded me it was six o'clock, and I needed to assess my child for the day. Because at six o'clock every day, you're supposed to assess your child's behavior and actions, and have they done what they're supposed to do. So I get a notification. Um, so with that, if there are no further questions for the staff, I will entertain a motion um, to approve um, the two thousand twenty-one non-traditional instruction program application.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-one non-traditional instruction program application that's presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, second. Go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Love, second by Mr. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion pass, any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Board members. Uh, thanks, Kate. Thanks, Sharonda. At this time, I'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, John White, and Director of Finance, Roddy Jackson, to present our monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The general fund review for the month of April twenty twenty reflects as follows. Our fund balance is indicated by the blue arrows, a hundred and fifteen million. Revenue is four hundred and eighteen million, and expenses three hundred and three million. Next. The general fund overview comparison from one year to the next shows our fund balance hundred and fifteen thousand issue, millions, excuse, million this year versus a hundred and hundred twenty-four point five million last year. Um, you notice there's a nine and a half million dollar drop comparison from March to, to April this year. Um, that is explained as follows. What we found is that the PSC, which is the tangible property, we haven't received that money that came in, that comes in usually in March or April. That's the way we pay inventory taxes on that. Um, that's about three million dollars. Our OLT, occupational license tax is down two point eight million dollars in revenue for April. But that's because a law was passed to change, a delay that's normally due in April now is due July fifteenth. But when it come in, in July, we will accrue it back to June, so it will still reflect in the current fiscal year. Also, motor vehicle taxes were down four hundred thousand compared to previous years. Um, this is because the county clerk's office and most dealerships were closed during April. So this also had an impact on this. Well, now with things opening up, we suspect that that will start to flatten out. And finally, because we're not renting buildings and bu- buses and interest, of course, is floored and tuition and so forth, there's about seven hundred thousand dollars related to that, related to revenue. So that's some of our shortfall for the month of April, which we expect most of it to come back and rebound. Next. For some of our funds, um, inside of your packet on page one oh three, I apologize, there's an error. That says March twenty twenty. As you see on the presentation, it's correct, it's April twenty twenty. The numbers in your, in the packet are correct, though, which only, only the, where it says March, it should say April. Everything else was absolutely correct. The total revenue for all funds combined was six hundred and six point five million approximately. Total expenditures, four hundred thirty-four point five million. Uh, net fund balance is a hundred and seventy-two million as indicated by the black arrow. Next. For all funds combined, Fund One through Fund Seven Thousand, you see it ties by the red arrow, showing a hundred and seventy-two million dollars. I will point out that the Fund Three Ten, which is Capital L A, I did confirm that we did receive our other one point eight million dollars for that fund. And whereas in the negative right now, that will flop over in May and show it to the positive. They send that money twice a year, once in the fall and once late in the spring. We just now receive the late spring payment. Next. The revenue analysis um, reflects with beginning balance four hundred eighteen million versus three hundred ninety-five million. Thus, approximately twenty-three million more comparing this year to last year. Next. Without beginning balance is three hundred forty-seven million to three hundred forty-three million um, last year. Next. Total expenses, three hundred and three million for twenty twenty versus two hundred seventy-one million for two thousand nineteen. This is primarily due to vendor payments being up by four point five million, and salaries and fringes make up thirteen point five million of that. It's important to note about seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is related to general fund food service charges that we have because of COVID-nineteen that we are hoping to recoup through Gears and um, ESER funds, but that was one expense that's happening right now. The biggest jump relates to timing the fund transfer expenditures and SS fourteen million related to um, park place. Next. General fund reflects total assets, a hundred and twenty-six million, total liabilities, eleven million. Our financial business remains solid as assets versus liabilities. Incomerses that we started reporting about three months ago represent purchase orders for goods and services not yet received. They become expenses when the purchase orders are received and paid. Incomers balance as of April, seven point five million dollars. If all these incomers for the seven point five million dollars paid out, our fund balance would be that much less and a hundred, approximately a hundred and seven million dollars. We have communicated and extended the purchase order cutoff date of May fifteenth, which recently just passed. Our goal is to research and pay and liquidate all purchase orders spent significantly prior to the June thirtieth cutoff. Next. Fund Seven Thousand, trust funds, Marcy Thompson, two hundred fifty, one eighty-four, Dorothy Smith, nineteen, three forty-two, and John Price, forty thousand one and twenty-one. Uh, other funds have been reconciled and sent to Bluegrass Community Foundation as received. Next. Are there any questions?
So Rodney, you have received assurances about the occupational auto that we will get that in by year end? Or year end?
Well, as far as occupational license tax, we're very constantly optimistic. I looked at May, for instance, our payroll taxes are still coming in very strong. We're only halfway through the month, and we're more than eighty percent for May in occupational license tax.
Right.
Now, but this part is the net profit that we're talking about specifically.
That's the part that can get delayed, is what I'm
So if, you know, it's a crapshoot for real, we don't know, but it's two point eight million dollars less than we received in previous years. We are thinking we will get a good portion of that, but we won't get all of it. There will be some shortfall, but the amount exactly, I don't know. As far as motor vehicle, uh, we've been told that basically when the county clerk opened back up, there's saying to be a strong market still for people trying to get new cars and, and, and everything else related to that. So we should see if that falls to be true. Once May is closed, I have a better idea of that, but I just wanted to make sure, as Board Member Murphy and you have asked before, what was going on. Now we have better information as April is closed to tell what we see.
Well, then, that was related to that because we've only collected, it looks like we've only collected twenty-two million dollars for occupational tax, so that leaves fifteen million outstanding. So you, you expect that we'll get that full fifteen million?
No, no, I do not expect we'll get the full fifteen million. What I'm saying is that it normally stays on a ebb and flow the same way. The only thing that happened is in April, the part related to the, to the net profit that normally comes in, we did not get because they delayed that till July.
Okay.
But as far as on the payroll side, it's been pretty steady coming in. And that happens every year that, this way. Primarily, we get most of our revenue related occupational license tax between April through, I mean, I'm sorry, a big portion of, between April and August fifteenth. Anything that comes in in July and August, we accrue back. So getting um, any or all of that um, net profit will go back into the previous year as part of our fund balance for ending
And that's my question. So what, when you say accrue back, what's that exact? How long can you run the clock to accrue back?
We run the clock through August fifteenth. That gives y'all time to where you work on the working budget to have the information related to tax rates and everything else. Yes.
But we also
Go ahead.
But we also, even after August fifteenth, we will contender to, continue to monitor those receipts or any subsequent events past August fifteenth. So if there's anything large and material, uh, we will bring that back, and it will be part of the FY twenty closing numbers.
And, and when do we expect, when do we usually get our on-behalf payments?
The, well, on-be-half payments is just a report that we get. We don't actually receive any money for that. So we have to book the res- it's offset in account. I think we have booked like a hundred and twenty-four million. So we booked the revenue, but there's corresponding expense for the same amount, so the net effect doesn't affect our balance whatsoever.
Okay.
So here's my, my question. Uh, so we've talked a little bit about, and you guys mentioned it, there's something that's larger material as we think about the adoption of the budget, kinda moving forward in the fall. Um, but I guess we will have to determine whether or not, I'm just gonna use this factor, I'll call it the COVID-nineteen factor. Basically, if we see that we're trending in certain areas, maybe it's property tax, et cetera, that we know traditionally we've been at this level, but we'll need, you all will be watching that and advising us accordingly. And I will say to the Board members too, I think since we are in the uh, uncharted waters, uh, one of the things that we always have an opportunity to do is to come back and amend our budget if we need to, uh, given unforeseen circumstances. I'm not correct. Mr. Jackson?
An amended budget's not a good budget, Board Member Love.
I know, I know.
Well, um, a, a better process, and I will refer to Jelaine, cause this is her expertise and John on this. But the tender budget is what we gonna have this month in May.
Right.
Now, between now and September, we'll have a good idea where our ending balance is, so we have better numbers of what we're starting with and ending with.
Okay.
So we'll, um, but with that being said, John, Jelaine, I have already been meeting to discuss these trends that I'm seeing so far right now. I'm gonna watch these every month, and I'll report to y'all as I did today, if I see anything that's really outstanding.
Hey, so Levin's Office given us a forecast of where a shortfall may be, cause the city seems to be working with a forecast. Do we have a forecast?
You talking about as far as occupational license tax?
Yes.
Yes, um, John, I, and Jelaine have all reached out to different, um, like, Jefferson County has occupational license tax. We talked to them after we saw their report. Um, we talked to the city. And we're looking at, I mean, in the next, I don't wanna take away from their presentation for the budget they gonna give at some point, but um, we are pulling back on occupational license tax because we don't know the effect on their profits and payroll.
And Board Members, you are right. Thou should not take away.
That's okay. To answer Darrell's question, if we have some significant revenue changes throughout the fiscal year, by all means, the Board has um, the flexibility to amend the work budget.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, and um, not necessarily a budget question, but just kind of a thing to put out there cause I saw like Marcy Thompson was listed. I serve on um, a couple of the different scholarship committees that we have for a couple of our different funds. And um, it was interesting that a couple of the different scholarships are actually able to give more out this year than they've been able to give in the past because their monies were higher. Um, but also, um, and give more scholarships, a couple of them gave more. And then, um, we actually, for every scholarship I sit on, the committee, every, they had more applicants than they've ever had before. So I think that's just than they've ever had before. So I think that's just kind of, just letting you know. It's good that we've got applicants and it's good that we're giving out more money from all these funds and I hope that that is a trend that continues to grow. So. If there are no further questions for the staff, I will entertain a motion to present tonight's treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Daniels.
A second.
Second by Mr. Love. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Jump the gun again. Let's talk about that now, Chair. Thank you, Rodney. Thank you, John, and thank you, board members. That was the last of our action items this evening. However, we do have several informational items for, for you, uh, this evening. First, I'd like to ask our Title One Coordinator, Mindy Mills, to tell you about an online learning platform that provides adaptive one-to-one intensive instruction and scaffold supports in both literacy and mathematics for all learners in grades pre-K through eighth. Including English learners, struggling students, students with special needs, and our gifted students as well. We ask you to consider a contract with this service during our next meeting on May twenty-sixth. Mindy.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. Um, if you remember at our last board meeting, we, when we presented our plan for summer bridge, one of the things that was mentioned during that is that we had put out an RFP for an online platform for literacy and mathematics. So I'm really sharing with you tonight the results of that RFP. So Amy, if you go to the next slide. So kind of Manny just kind of read that, read that to you, what the Board of Jenda says and, and why we felt the need for this online learning platform, something that is adaptive. It's going to meet every student where they are and move them forward, has scaffolded support, including some live teachers that are actually available. It does incorporate literacy and mathematics in one platform, pre-K through eight, meeting all learners. We want to make sure that it is a supplement to core instruction. So whether our students are in school or not in school, this is a platform that's going to work for that. And it's also going to be a platform that's really good for tier two and tier three intervention for those students that need that. So obviously, we hope to kick it off and use it for the summer bridge and it will be available for future extended school closures as we move forward. So after scoring the RFPs that we received, we scored six RFPs and the one that came out on top and that we are recommending for purchase is Imagine Learning. Um, it has full student access for pre-K through eighth grade and we can also use it for high school students. If they are struggling readers or struggling math students, it's especially good for high school students, there are newcomers and E L students as well. So with this contract or with this district wide license, we'll have access to all six of the Imagine Learning platforms. Um, and you see those listed there and the grade levels that they encompass. So students can go back and forth between the math and the language and the literacy and the reading. Um, one thing about Imagine Learning that is very unique is the Imagine Espanol, which is great for our young newcomers and also the students in the Spanish immersion program for the K, pre-K to second grade. Never had anything like that before. It also includes an assessment component that we will be able to track mastery of the Kentucky academic standards for reading and writing. We're excited about that opportunity as well. So Imagine Learning, some things that it offers that we are feel that are going to meet the needs of our students and our schools and our teachers. It is adaptive. Uh, it responds continuously and in real time. So students, the lessons that are assigned to that, a teacher doesn't actually have to go in and assign the lessons. Based on that student's performance in the online platform, it does that for them. It's very unique learning experience tailored to each student and it is actually very engaging as well. Uh, a lot of game type formats, incentives built into the platform where they get badges and different type things. Uh, the language support in English and Spanish for all the products and in fifteen different languages for E L A. So if we have a newcomer that is an Arabic speaker, that's built into the platform to help them with a second language as they transition into our schools. Um, access to a live on demand, on demand bilingual math teacher. So if a student is working on a math issue and they start having difficulty, then it'll actually pop up and they have the opportunity to have a live teacher come into their session and, um, assist them with that. Um, it is proven to have results for English learners, special needs, all of our populations, aligned to the state standards. Um, one thing that's very unique about Imagine Learning is complete access to their parent academy. So families and guardians of our E L students can have access and that we will give them and they can get a login where they can actually try the platform and they can learn English at home. The professional learning and the support with Imagine Learning is just incredible. We've already experienced a lot of that uh, in the past couple of years. So there'll be onboarding and ongoing success and support as we move through using their products. All right. So this is just kind of a, a snapshot of what Imagine Learning has already been doing in Fayette County schools. They were very generous and we already had about fourteen schools that had a schoolwide license and were using Imagine Learning with their students. And when the closures began back in March, Imagine Learning offered us a full free site license, district wide license for all of our students. So you can see that that's about how many students we've had at this point on the language and literacy, how many we've had on mathematics and so forth. Uh, two hundred and ninety-five live teacher sessions. Um, it says the F C, F C P S students using math in the math are on trajectory to achieve up to two years and seven months of academic growth in that platform. And then the learning opportunities, just since the school closures, their support team has offered thirty-seven Zoom trainings just for F C P S teachers as they've helped, uh, get this going on those free license. There's twenty-five national and regional webinars. And another thing that's really robust for Imagine Learning is their Imagine University, which is self-guided P D, and we've had five hundred and twenty-seven logins with that. So like I said, these are just a couple quotes from a couple of our principals who have experience using the program. Julie Strange from Wellington says Imagine Learning has been an amazing tool for our students, particularly our English learners. Because this program is available to students at home as well as in the school building, a great number of our students and their families have logged a significant amount of hours, increasing their reading, listening and speaking skills. We've had a great feedback from our families as they have benefited from increasing English proficiency as well. And then Stephanie Urbannick at one of our Title One Schools at Meadowthorpe, the products offered by Imagine Learning are just what we are looking for to meet the diverse needs of all students. The students love it and teachers are happy with the user-friendly reports to monitor and respond to student learning and progress. Imagine Learning staff have been amazing with both training faculty and troubleshooting and moments notice. So these are just kind of, that's the results in the program that was chosen from our RFP. Uh, and as the superintendent said, our next board meeting will be asking for approval of that contract that will run from July first through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Because we already have the free license with them, it's no problem to kick off our summer bridge program in June. So it'll just be a smooth transition there. The contract will be licensed for all pre-K through eighth grade students in F C P S. So every school in Fayette County will have access to that and as many license as we need for additional high school students. It does include the professional learning and support for a cost of eight hundred and seventy thousand. And we, uh, feel like with conversations with John and Jelaine in different groups that this is definitely an appropriate expenditure for the CARES Act funding, either GEAR or Essor. Um, because it is a need that is a, as a result of our school closures due to COVID nineteen. Any questions?
So, um, I'm just wanting to clarify. So is the summer bridge program still going to be for the students below the forty percent or is because of this contract now, every student is going to be able to have access to this?
Okay. So there will be two different options in the summer. We, um, actually, I just before tonight, we have all, oh, over forty-seven hundred students identified as targeted for the summer. Those are the students who will be on the platform with teacher support. Okay? But the platform will be available for every student in Fayette County. So anyone's, any child can be on the platform, logging in and using it. Just like I heard you, uh, earlier, Board Members, about encouraging families to kind of keep a routine in the summer. So this will be available to all students. He, he may not be logged on and have for the summer bridge.
Just going to throw this out here. As a parent, um, just the ability to have the platform ahead of time and be able to transition into the fall if we have to do this again would be really nice. Um, and I'm excited that it does take into account, uh, kids with, with, you know, that are receiving, um, services and those types of things. So I'm excited about it. I'm not familiar with this. Have you all used it with your kids? Just curious. Have the other board members have experience with Imagine?
I've used it. Mr. Love is not with his college students. They have not used it. No, I, my kids use it. We use it. I mean, we've been using it for a couple of years.
Okay.
And we like it, or I like it.
I like it.
And I think this is a great program for the summer, but I know my kids will be doing daily. So, and I want to address real quick, one of the questions that we've been asked a lot from the community is the access to internet. And so, um, Superintendent Cock, I don't know if you can maybe answer Chromebook situation for summer, but I know one thing we've done as a district is, um, we have given hotspots out to families that need it. We have made sure our families have Chromebooks. Um, and I know I just want to kind of address that because I get a lot of questions about and we really, that's something I have to commend our staff on is they've been finding these families and what they need and really working with them to get that. So, um, I want to make sure that's known. But I don't know if Mindy or Superintendent Cock maybe just address the summer.
So this is a program that students would need access. So students will, uh, keep their Chromebooks over the summer uh, for this purpose so they can have access to this program. And any students, um, that, you know, uh, let's say that we, that moves into Fayette County during this time period over the summer or in June and the families need access to the internet, we just supply, uh, provide them with the, the hotspot. So those families can keep those hotspots. They're good for six months. We, and, and so that, that'd take you into, um, early fall as well. And so that's what we're looking to do is make sure that there is a, um, continuation and there's continuity. So you don't have to turn the Chromebooks in. You keep them. It's easy to log in, as you know, board members spires, our cheer spires working with Imagine Learning. Um, it's meant to be highly engaging, um, rewarding and, and, uh, motivating for students. But we are caught, recognize that we don't want students spending too much screen time over the summer. Right? And so that's why the schedule is such that we don't want students to be at the screen for the hours. Right? And so it's really chunk and specific to work on literacy and math. Uh, it's meant, uh, for students to be able to, um, utilize the platform on their own, should not require a lot of parent support in that sense, uh, like N T I does. So the parent has a different role. The parent should be there as sort of the cheerleader, you know, monitor, to encourage, to check on their, their, their child, but they don't have to deliver instruction. Not asking them to be the teacher, uh, during the, the summer bridge program. Does that, uh, answer the question, Board, uh, Board Chair Spires?
Yes, it does. I believe you guys, I gave this information to Matt at some point, but if we have, um, families that reach out to us that need a hotspot, who do we, uh, who do we send?
Need consent to the superintendent's office. So the, the Tanya Daley and myself. If there's a family that, um, is in need of a hotspot that we haven't identified. All right. So thank you, board members. Thank you, Mindy. Next, we'll share, uh, additional information, uh, with you related to our tentative budget. Tonight, you're here from Equity Officer, Mr. Darrell Thompson, Manager of Economic Development and Supply Diversity, Ms. Marilyn Clark, and our Budget Director, Jelaine Mullins, and our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. John White. I'll turn it over to the team.
Uh, good evening. As we, I think we're rounding the, the, the final turn into the home stretch of the ton- tentative budget bill process. So tonight, uh, we're going to show you the last or discuss the last imperatives that we have. Um, so we'll just go on and get into it. Next slide, Amy, please. So tonight's agenda, excellent relationships as Superintendent Cock just mentioned, Marilyn, uh, Marilyn Clark and Darrell Thompson. And then Jelaine and I will present to you projected revenues and expenses for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year as well as the same year salary schedules. Next slide. Some of the slides, uh, you see, well, you've seen these before, but for the benefit of those who may not have been with us the past couple of meetings, May seventh, uh, we presented, uh, excellent, excellent support presentations. On the fourteenth, uh, last week, there was a special call meeting for excellent support from staff, excellent schools and student opportunities where you saw presentations. Uh, tonight, we're going to continue with the excellent relationships with Marilyn Clark and Darrell Thompson. And again, a overview of the tentative budget and the salary schedules. Next slide. On the twenty-sixth, we'll come back for hopefully the final special call board meeting as it relates to the tentative budget. And we will present some budget facts to you as well as we will finalize the tentative budget salary schedules for any adjustments or whatever that may come up tonight. Mid-August, the district will receive our property assessments and proposed tax rates. And from that, we have forty-five days from the certification date from the Kentucky Department of Revenue to actually approve and submit those approved rates to County Clerk, Don Blevins. Next slide. Mid-August, our fund balance process we finalized. Again, August fifteenth is our cutoff for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty, uh, two thousand twenty. Along that same timeframe, the staffing allocations will be adjusted. And September, early September sometime, um, again, based on a request from Don Blevins' office that we submit to him, our board approved rates early September. We'll nail down that date as we, as we finally learn a, uh, a firm date of the certification date from the Department of Revenue. And we will submit that working budget to K D E by September thirty. Next slide. And to that, there's no questions thus far. I will turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Marilyn Clark.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, partner.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, thank you for giving me this opportunity just to give you an overview of what we've been doing this year. Next slide. So the department is a very small department. Uh, myself, as the full-time person, uh, Sarah Gaines is our administrative assistant and she works between my department and also purchasing and logistics. Uh, the budget is twenty-six thousand dollars. Ten thousand of that is for a, um, new system that we have, um, for bids and for tracking all of our contracts. We have a number of strategic partnerships and it's really important for the work that I do. Uh, not only do I need the support of everybody in the district, but I also need the support of strategic partners. Uh, on the left-hand side, you'll see all of our partners that are on a state level. Um, some are operating in two or three states and, uh, nationally, we have the Minority Supply Development Council. On the right-hand side, we have a number of local, uh, partners. Uh, one of the things that we've done is we have formed a regional supply diversity collaborative with about thirty-five different organizations across the state. We meet about four times a year. Next slide. So some of our initiatives, um, the Veterans Business Summit, veterans are very important to us. They're a very difficult group to meet. They're a very difficult group to meet and to attract, to come out and to network. And so we're working on doing some things specifically for them. This is an event that we've had for the last three years. We invite students to participate, the color guard, and singing of the national anthem. We got some television coverage from Channel 36 and 27. And the SBA was a big partner, as well as our other strategic partners were there. Next slide. Building intentional partnerships is really important. This is our construction program. It's where we talk about what's coming up, our forecasting. Really appreciate the support from Melinda and from Myron. Commerce Lexington is our host. They take really good care of us and really work hard to make this event a success. We had about 70 people that attended. We also had Tate Hill and Jacob to come and talk about the Tate Street Project. And we think it's important to have events like this before large projects to try to get primes and subcontractors together in a room where they are very casual in meeting one another and then building those intentional partnerships. Next slide. The Minority Business Expo is in its 18th year. Every year, we have technology students. We really appreciate Amy and Bob allowing them to come, but they actually work. They do all the setup for all the technical parts of the conference. We also have a table there, and we've been working really hard to try to get more diverse students there. We were really successful for that this year. So we really enjoyed the student and activity. We have 40 students that we underwrite the cost for, and about most of those are from Fayette County schools. Next slide. One of the things that we have worked on the last couple of years is getting our high school academies working with businesses. Altech has been a wonderful partner. We've taken students to conferences the last few years. Today, Altech kicked out, kicked off a really wonderful virtual conference. And we had the opportunity to listen this morning to an astronaut, a female astronaut that had been on the space station for 180 days, and it was pretty, pretty remarkable. The other thing I will mention about this workforce development is that I've had conversations with VCTC about a construction pipeline training program. Right now, we have a shortage of construction workers on entry level. And the other thing about the industry is that there will be a lot of retirements coming up. So we're working diligently to try to find some solutions to those in advance. Next slide. The other initiative that I'll talk to you about is called Economics in Education. And just to give you a little bit of a background, I met at NMSDC with a young lady named Sonia Mowen from the Initiative for Competitive Inner Cities, or ICIC. This is an organization that was founded in 1994 by Michael Porter. He is a Harvard economics professor, and he created this economic development process for communities. That's been very effective. And basically what he says is that in order to change social problems, you have to have more than social programs, that you have to have that business engagement, and you have to grow those businesses. And so our role in working with our strategic partners is to really grow the businesses in the community so that we can bring in more income and hire more people. Next slide. So the concept is growing the economy through anchor institutions. And an anchor institution really is Fayette County Schools. We are a large employer. We spend money to make sure that our school district runs well. We, we work well with our students, and those students become employees down the road. And so the amount of money that we spend in LFUCT and KU and LGNE, all of that makes a tremendous, tremendous impact in the community. So we want to start to grow our, our community and our economy. We're really looking at what those anchor institutions are doing with their purchasing. Next slide. So the initiative that we launched this year was called Economics in Education. It is our framework for growing the economy through anchor institutions. Unfortunately, we had planned our first community event on March 18th. We had over 100 businesses registered. We had nine sessions, two speakers, exhibitors, and we had to postpone. But we are partnering a lot with the Small Business Administration on this particular project and in other projects. The program will have four elements. First, the business development, which is the most important. But we'll also look at community, community economic development, meaning if there's money coming into the community, is it being spent in the communities where it's intended? We'll have a speaker series and also community forums. So I'm pretty excited about that. Next slide. This is Ashley Bell. Ashley Bell is the Regional Director for the Small Business Administration. Ashley is extremely involved on a national level. He is the White House Point Person for Minority Business Development, for entrepreneurship, and for opportunity zones. And we're lucky to have him in our region. He's hosting a town hall meeting on Wednesday night. So we're getting that information out to our businesses. But these are the programs that the SBA provides, and they're really wonderful programs. And what we're trying to do is get our businesses to the second level or third level by engaging with these programs. So we're working very diligent with, diligently with them. We have a signed memorandum of agreement with them and hope to have Ashley in the speakers series that we're talking about. Hopefully, he can be our first speaker. So, next slide. One thing, if you go back to the, the last slide, I just wanted to bring something up. The SBA has a program called Hub Zone. And Hub Zone is a historically underutilized business zone. And we currently have 28 schools that are in hub zones. And so we're taking a look at the companies that are listed in those hub zones. Can we move them towards getting contracts with the federal government? And can we move them towards hiring people that in, that are in those hub zones? So that's part of our work that we'll be doing together this year. Next slide. This is our new software, and it couldn't have come at a better time because we are now tracking, I would say, over 30 or 40 contracts in the system at one time. It puts out our bids. Matt uses it for bids. I also use it for contracts. You can search for vendors there. You can also register as a, as a company. You can go through a training. And so our prime contractors and our subcontractors are notified, and they are going through the system, inputting their information, and we're going through monthly audits. So there's also a Power BI portion to this. So hopefully, in a couple of months after we finish up the rest of our training, we'll be able to show some really nice graphic reports. Next slide. These are our metrics, and I usually put the metrics at the end so that you can understand all the other things that we have to do to get to the metrics. But the thing that I'll point out on this particular slide is that we do have minority and women-owned businesses participating in our bids. We do have them winning bids. So out of the 28 bids that we did towards the end of March, 28 companies that are diverse companies submitted bids. And then we had 12 bids that were awarded to those diverse vendor, vendors. So I'm pretty proud of that number. The other thing to note is that the majority of our spends are in small portions. Our average spend is about $600. So if you look at the 20,000 purchase orders we did, 19,000 under $5,000. And of those 19,586 dollars is the average spend. So small companies can find work with us, and that's what we're trying to stress. Next slide. So this is, if you look at the last column for April 30th, this is where we are year-to-date as of April 30th. The other three columns are really, you're in close for the last three years. So one of the things I want to point out here is that we have already surpassed last year's total spend for minority businesses with two months left to go in the year. And so we're really, really excited about that. That takes a full participation by everybody in the district to bring these numbers up. It's not just me. I can't do it alone. So we appreciate those organizations and different people that are really looking at this and taking it seriously. I think that over the next two months, that we will probably be somewhere pretty close to even with where we ended up last year, even in spite of COVID-19, or possibly above, depending on how we look at how we spent and what our spending looks like. So I just wanted to share that with you. Next slide. So COVID-19, we have been supporting small businesses. Our response was, we started listing things on our website. We started an economic development newsletter. It's been going out to over 3,000 businesses. We'll put out our sixth newsletter this coming week. We've done a series of economics and education webinars with the Small Business Administration. We have a series called Meet the Primes, where we are introducing prime contractors that do construction to other businesses around the state. We are promoting everybody else's virtual meetings. And I had the opportunity to sit on the White House African-American Stakeholders Calls. There were two of those calls. The first one was about COVID-19 in minority communities. But the second call was really about how to get more of those loans for minority companies. And I'm sure you've heard about some of the larger companies getting the money. So we're working on that. That will be part of the town hall meeting that Ashley Bell will have Wednesday night. And the last part of this is really interesting in that they have a committee that's been working on economic development initiatives for communities of color and inner cities. They've been working on it for a year and a half, and they will be coming up with what they plan to do. And we would definitely be a part of that, be a part of that process. So we've been very busy, and just wanted to share that with you. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that.
Good evening. If you'll go back one slide, please. I'll transition from Marilyn's presentation. Thank you, Marilyn. Excellent job. One thing I've learned, this is Darrell Thompson, I'm the Equity Officer within the Office of Equity Schools Supporting Community Engagement, is that tomorrow's not guaranteed. And so knowing that, there's an old saying, you need to give people their flowers while they're living. And so I've got a couple of individuals that, before you're on the slide, that speaks to standing on the shoulders of those who came before us. But there's also one that's not there, and her name is Tierra Kavanaugh Wayne. The work that you just saw Marilyn present is a example of the work. And the reason behind that is the work that Kiara done. She completed with us back in 2010, a decade ago. Tierra is no longer with us. We lost her about two weeks ago in Louisville. She was a successful minority businesswoman, growing fast in America as the second fastest-growing business in the country. But we lost Kiara, and we didn't get a chance to give her thanks for the work she helped us do to build the foundation of our supply diversity program. So I first want to recognize that and give respect to her and her family for the work that she did in Fayette County Public Schools while she was here. Secondly, there's a lot of people on the screen that did this work well before me. And you can see that's 40 years of time, if you go back to the 80s. But prior to that, people like Vince Maddox and Barbara Connor and Tanya Daley, as you know, who still works with us, Greg Figs and Roy Woods and David Cozart, and PG Peoples, Marlene Helm, to say the least. And there's also some on that screen that have all so passed away, John Price, Suzie Kavanaugh, et cetera. So I want to give thanks and respect those who did this work before me. We still have individuals in our community like Alice Nelson and Jessica Berry who continue to do the work that was in this office, and so we want to thank them as well. So Board, thank you all in addition. And thank you Superintendent Cock for the opportunity to build this office back to where we started many, many years ago. Next slide. This slide is a fully encompassing logo that we designed for the Office of Equity. When you look at the logo, you should see a system, a system of operations around our equity agenda, which is include inclusion, access, process, and outcome. But also outside the system, you'll see our office parts, the pieces in the makeup of our office, minority recruitment, SPM Council, culture, sponsor, teaching, and learning, et cetera. I've got t-shirts for you all with that logo on it. It's the first time I've shared this publicly through presentation, but I wanted to certainly show how we brand the work in our office by a simple symbol, a logo. Next slide. So, and this is what we operate from. I'll read this. I think it should resonate, and hopefully it will give you perspective into my leadership approach for how I lead the office. Every morning in Africa, a gazelle wakes up. It knows it must outrun, it must run faster than the fastest lion, or it will be killed. Every morning, a lion wakes up. It knows it must outrun the slowest gazelle, or it will starve to death. Doesn't matter whether you're a lion or gazelle. When the sun comes up, you better be running. And so we use this approach particularly during this time to remind ourselves that we have to stay hungry, we have to stay innovative, we have to stay awake, and we cannot be complacent about moments in time. So we want to capitalize and maximize on every opportunity we have. Next slide. This next slide represents my Human Capital Resource Management. As I can look at this slide, if you circle back 2015, that organizational chart was made up of the superintendent, myself, and a secretary. Literally, everything below me no longer existed. The district restructured and reorganized and moved and put people in positions and places throughout the district. In essence, left me and a secretary. And then I acquired additional staff, which is Erica Beatty. Everything else, as you see from 2015, has been built out, again, through the support of the board, the support of the superintendent. And much of that office, as you can see, provides a whole lot of work that you're going to see going forward. Below, in the gray, you'll see some vacant positions, as well as an administrative specialist support position. My office does not operate with the secretary. We gave that position up to help support the budget cuts throughout the district several years ago. And so we maintain with a high level of efficiency by doing less with more. We also use those positions below as permanent substitutes in our EZPZ schools prior to the CSI, PSI designations. And we're now transitioning those positions as teacher and staff in residence. Next slide. Doing more with less. Doing a whole lot more with less. And so I thought to talk to you all about our growth mindset. And as much as some of this stuff may seem cliche, it's a trite. It's real because we operate from the mindset that if we see opportunities rather than obstacles, resources rather than roadblocks, permanent solutions rather than temporary solutions. And so now, more than ever, we have to create new solutions for our new tomorrow. We cannot operate as if today's going to be just like tomorrow. Tomorrow's going to be like yesterday. We have to create a new opportunity for not just our students and families, but how do we continue to exist? And as superintendent would say, how do we continue to represent ourselves on the vital statistics monitor? Ensure that our district has a heartbeat. Next slide. So as you all know, we have an equity statement. I won't read it. But you also saw the details of this captured in our equity logo. So that logo was designed, creating all of this in one single snapshot. Next slide. So you often hear presentations, and you've seen it from the office curriculum instruction and assessment, grants and accountability, leadership development. We also operate from the same continuous improvement framework, which is Plan, Do, Study Act. Within our model, we ask ourselves, what are we trying to accomplish? How will we know that the change that we made was an improvement? And what change can we make that will result in improvement? Not just, again, just temporarily, but what are the sustainable changes that we can make in our office? Next slide. So we ask ourselves these disruptive equity questions, and you could ask yourself these same questions. Why are we so committed to do, not do what others have already done when the stakes are even ever-changing and we know a new season is dawning upon us? Are we willing to search for better solutions than anybody else has already discovered? And how can we innovate and create even more to date than ever? What can we do now that's never been done before? Something that will make us more effective and more efficient, doing less with more, given our current state and our current circumstances? And what evidence reveals what we're impacting, what we're doing is impacting students, families, and our community? These are real questions. Again, they may seem trite or cliche-ish, but they're real when it comes to how do we, in our office, become change agents to impact? become change agents to impact the way we do business and how we serve our families? Next slide. And so that's done again through what we call the five dysfunctions of a team, which is written by Patrick Mencioni. But we don't focus on those five dysfunctions. What we want to do is operate under a positive approach for how we actually treat each other and how we drive change in our school district. We trust one another is what we do. We engage in unfiltered conflict around ideas. We commit to decisions and plans for actions. We hold one another accountable for delivering against those plans. And one thing more importantly, we focus on the achievement of our collective results. We celebrate each other for what we do, small, indifferent, or even great. And so, next slide. We operate on these three Rs. Now, Sironda Morton shared three Rs with you all. These three Rs probably predate her three Rs, but we'll share ours anyway. These three Rs of our success predicate on, are we relevant? That means, do we believe what we do is essential to the district and the community? Are we respected? We believe we are respected by our peers and what we do is important and respected by the district and the community. And then finally, are we responsive? We believe we are useful to all students, families, and the community. We rise to the call of action when that call is asked. And we continue to support a service delivery approach. And so the next series of slides, you're going to see how that work is done, where it's done. And again, how we've been able to do it efficiently, efficiently with a small budget as well as the human capital. Next slide. So you all familiar with this slide? One thing I can share, if you get, if you look like you're about to start praying or that means you look like you're getting sleepy, I do understand. I presented this data at least thirty to forty times over the next past five years. I've had the opportunity to present before the board. That is one privilege on your standing agenda, that you have a chance to hear the work from an equity perspective. And again, over the past five years, you've seen some parts of this presentation either thirty or forty times. Next slide. We talk about the impact of work, and this is a snapshot of the work we did on a national level. We were partners with eight other districts selected by Scholastic and AASA to help develop a framework in partnership with Dr. Karen Matt around dual capacity framework and how to harness the power of families. Next slide. Locally, again, partner with a national provider, Scholastic. And as you can see, when we launched Real Men Read, it was a face-to-face engagement. And as of two weeks ago, you saw how we transitioned and used creativity and innovation to now transform that program from a face-to-face engagement to a virtual engagement called Virtual Real Men Read. And again, you saw some of that in the press release. Next slide. We also have brought before you work around where children doesn't matter and what the research says, but more so than what the research, what the data says. If you look out into our communities right now, you can see our families are even more stressed and our communities in crisis. And so we know that the data, as well as the reality, as we continue to look at summer feeding programs, look at other ways to support learning, where those children live matter. You just heard others talk about Chromebooks and hotspots and all those things to help close the digital divide. These things are the areas that we ensure in our office that we have a pulse on to help support our families. Next slide. Additionally, a couple of other areas, family learning guides that we put in the hands of several thousand of our families, our call to action under GIFT10, our summer learning and more, and now support with our Summer Bridge Program. And you'll see on the next slide, a transformation of Summer Bridge to help support families called Face It. Next slide. And Faces is a series of podcasts and learning engagement opportunities in partnership with the Sixteenth District PGA to help our families stay engaged, help them with the service approach to speak, discuss, unpack some of the issues they're facing during this time and going forward around mental, physical, social, housing insecurity, food insecurity. Additionally, you'll see other programs such as the Lift Conference, partnership with the Urban League, Harmony Center through FAMU, Lexington Parks and Recreation. Next slide. CPLT, another, again, community partnerships. And as you can see, that the work we do is not done alone. It requires multiple partners at multiple levels cascade across the city to make our success happen. And I won't go through all of those, but Golden Apple Award again, Say Yes Lex, et cetera. Next slide. Cuts and Curls is a phenomenal social, emotional, I would call it a initiative more so, and I would call it a program that we now partner with faith-based organizations and barbers across the city to help transform the lives of our students at the start of school. It's our hope that we'll be able to do this again as we go back to school. But what you see there is a school, that's Frederick Douglass High School, that we transformed into a barber shop and styling location. So it's very, very, seems small, but a great bit of social, emotional help to those students and families. Next slide. And from the academic standpoint, many of my staff completely and wholly support our school, particularly the through line to student success for transforming their academic outcomes. As I mentioned on that first slide, you saw that we utilize what we have as a teacher residence program to support our EZPZ schools early on. And then as CSI schools, as we saw a need for supporting permanent subs, we utilize those positions within those schools. We can see we have parent academies built into that model, family centers, professional learning opportunities, et cetera, that's provided through school-based family supports. Next slide. We also work with the Cardigy Wisdom Academy, now the Girls' Scheme Program. We've got staff that sit on both those committees. I serve in capacity on many of them as well through supporting the initiatives for grant opportunities from the New School Ventures Program that you've heard Superintendent Calk talk about. I brought forth the sixteen nineteen program that you heard me give a slight perspective on between sixteen nineteen or seventeen seventy-six. We also saw the work of Vida Stewart in our office. She delivered a very, very impactful, original poem on this subject. But again, we try to explore those spaces where most people are most uncomfortable. And it's our work to ensure that we push the envelope, not just with our peers, but within the community when it comes to addressing issues around educational equity and all times is done through platforms such as this. Next slide. District Minority Recruitment. Right now, there's a ton of work going on virtually, which schools look into staff and put their teams together. Rose Santiago is that person now who has stepped into that role and done an excellent job of transitioning that work. And so we have a district minority recruitment and retention team. We work now to look at how we do this differently. For years, I used a platform called LinkedIn Recruiter, which allowed us to connect outside of the district, across the nation. If you think about recruitment and retention historically, you think about that being face-to-face. But to now, today's ever-changing world, it's done in a virtual platform and has been. And so we're utilizing that more even now than ever. Next slide. Cultural accomplishment and racial bias. I'm sure most people, when looking at today's society, hear people say, get over it. When it comes to race, it's all, we don't have racism in America. Surely, if you just turn your TV on, you're more reminded more of that today than ever. And so for those who had got complacent and thought that it was simply a thing of the past because you saw people in positions and as if those positions represented that we've got over, then you were well misled that racism is not dead, it's not new. What we have now is a resurgence of what has already existed. Now more than ever, I think our district needs to be even more intentional about addressing racial cultures, institutional bias, and impartiality that comes with people who use power and privilege to push forth their agendas that has basically protected sacred cows. For those who don't think it happens in education, it's real. All you have to do is look at the achievement gap and where that achievement gap starts. And again, you go back to the slide that talks about where children live matter is the beginning. And oftentimes, you also see it in early childhood education. Families don't have the opportunity to get early childhood at a high level. Next slide. Again, we have our staff now being trained in understanding an introductory role of race and implicit bias. Again, this is not the most comfortable conversation for many and most, as you have noticed in this business. But nevertheless, you have to push people past those points of discomfort so they can gain an understanding for who they are and what we're doing to help change happiness in this school district. Next slide. This is a snapshot of how we help support students coming in from alternative learning environments, adjudicated youth who are placed outside of the traditional learning platform. As you know, the work we've done throughout the year in the presentations we provided you, that there are multiple tools and approaches to ensuring student success. We have the Success Academy that's predicated off of one of those where we take those students who were previously dropouts and have re-engaged them. And you'll see and have heard the success we've had from that programs with current graduates. You see restorative justice in circles, you see bridges over poverty, you see mediation training that we get from the Eckerd College. Many of my staff are trained in brain-based research on how boys and girls learn differently, as well as conflict resolution. So that's other part of our service delivery from within this office. Next slide. And to close this out, you'll see several other community partners that help do this work with us. Again, it takes an entire community to ensure the success of our public schools. United Way, to say that, a few, Consolidated Baptist, Bracktown, Lexington Public Library, Urban League, Urban County Government, the Commerce Lexington. I served on the Public Policy Committee with the Chamber and have served on that committee for about ten years. We put out public policy statements annually about those points of urgency as well as the legislative platform for education. We fly into Washington DC. I've challenged Mitch McConnell, Rand Paul, Andy Barr, you name the least, right there in the Senate chambers in Capitol Hill about how we can address many of the things we've talked about in this presentation. So it takes, again, courage to do this work. It's thankless work, but it's necessary. Oftentimes, you don't see the slings and arrows that many of us take in this equity world against the outrageous fortunes that this put before us. But again, it's courageous work. So I thank the board for supporting it. I thank our superintendent for giving us the opportunity to be courageous, to stand against those things that historically remained as sacred cows. Next slide. So to sum up the presentation, you'll see right there in blue, the approximate operating budget for this office is $187,000. You'll see captured in green how that dollar amount rolls up. About $62,000 in family community engagement, which takes care of all of our family universities, our partnerships, our events that we have in the public, back-to-school rallies, backpack drives, et cetera. You'll see under Vida Stewart, CSI, Support and CSI Self, Cardigy Witch, and Algebra Project. These are collaborations that we do at no cost, but that doesn't mean it doesn't have a cost. EL and Refugee. We just added a member of our team to come in and support our ELs and refugee families as we do our comp stat meetings, identify student academic outcomes with our schools. We've disaggregated the data to see that our families need support. So we've added that support with a bilingual professional in our office in that space. Again, I mentioned the minority recruitment and retention work that Rose Santiago does, but she also supports our CSI and CSI schools academically through walkthroughs and observations. Again, student and family dropout prevention and re-engagement as well as restorative practice. And then Christian Adair, in collaboration again with Erica Beatty, both serving in those titles, supports the Real Men Read and EBOC. And EBOC is Educating Boys of Color. You know, we launched this program originally from a philanthropic grant through the Kenan Foundation, which was a $600,000 grant three years ago. We liquidated those funds and the board then agreed to support the Real Men Read program at 300K. And then lastly, but certainly not least, Culture, Sponsor, Teaching and Learning has a $20,000 annual operating budget where we're able to create modules and trainings to support all sixty-plus school and building locations. So again, thank you all for supporting us. Again, this is not warm and fuzzy, but it's real. And it's like a double-edged sword, it cuts from both ways. So I do appreciate the work and supportive support. I'll pause for any questions. Thank you all.
Mr. Thompson, I don't really have a question. I just want to, you know, again, I think both you all did a great job on your reports this evening. And I want to kind of go back to Ms. Clark and just, you know, this is again, a journey that we've been on for quite some time in trying to make sure that we make some movement in terms of our supply diversity program. And again, want to commend the work that's been done in this area because I think it's a very systematic approach versus a one-and-done. So it's around how do we build? Couple of things that she mentioned, I think is really key for us, and that is, one, when she talked about the hub zones. And then she also talked a little bit about BCT. Because one of the things that we think about as a school system, how do we make sure that we're providing opportunities for all of our students to be successful? Whether they want to go straight into the job market, if they would like to go on to post-secondary education. And so trying to create those career readiness pathways are just key. And the ability for us to be able to provide opportunity, especially in terms of training and partnerships, is really how we kind of tackle and bring lift families out of poverty to be able to really change the overall outlook of those particular families. So, you know, I think when you think about this as in a very cohesive manner, we are more than simply about providing education in the classroom. We are about transforming the lives of our students and also trying to figure out the ways that we can bring people together to form those partnerships that allows, as the tide and the river, you may say, starts to rise, it helps to rise and lift all the boats so everybody has equal access. And then I think when you say that and then you kind of come back and you look at equity through the lens of our practices, what we're able to do to make sure that all of our kids have equal opportunities, that we're removing some of the barriers, where we heard that today in terms of technology. How do we provide access for hotspots and stuff like that and be able to support our families? So I'm really pleased to see some of the progress that we are making in this particular area because we are a very diverse district socially economically. When you think about the various backgrounds that we also have, race, nationalities within our district. And so to be able to make sure that we acknowledge that and that as we are performing our work as a district, we're leading with that particular lens in mind. So that's my comment.
All right, Yulane. Let's go, partner.
Okay. Next slide. Okay, so to get things off, I believe I have forwarded a copy of the actual budget document that will be electronically uploaded to Katie's website for approval before the thirtieth. But just to give you a summary, we wanted to kind of hear where, how our budget was put together. And as you can see, our real and personal property tax is 39% of our budget. Our SIC, probably about ten years ago, was like 33%, and now it's like 16% of our budget. And of course, our utility tax and our motor vehicle, with our fund balance approximately 10% of our budget. Next slide. In addition to our general fund, we also have our building and capital ally funds, which is how we pay for our debt service and do our capital construction projects. We also have our grant revenue, as well as our food service fund that make up our entire budget package in addition to the general. Next slide. Also, we are powered by KDE to sort our budget by function. And in the back of the budget document itself, I kind of give you a cheat sheet to know what's included in those various functions. And we just want to, it's kind of hard to see what the percentage is if you're just looking at the numbers on paper. But we actually have 59% of our budget is funded in instruction alone, whereas instructional support, school admin, and district admin support, as well as student support services. They are all providing direct supports and many of those expenses are directly in our schools. Next slide. We also, you know, since our budget is predominantly 80% of our budget is salaries, it was important for us to show you how those salaries are being spent. So as I alluded before, direct classroom support services, we're spending about 91% of our salary expenses are going directly into our classrooms and supporting our students and teachers. And then we have roughly 9% being spent at the district level, which includes like our maintenance and operation area, as well as our business support, such as budget staffing, financial services, HR, our legal team.
Jelaine, cutting out, you, Jelaine, you cut out on us there.
Excuse me?
Your audio was cutting out on us for a second.
Oh, okay. Well, let me see if I can pull it up. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'll see if I can pull myself up here and talk a little louder. As you've heard, I mean, we have been watching webinar after webinar, trying to get more information as we have shut down school and went to NTI and providing, you know, providing meals to our kids along bus routes and that type of thing. The federal government, they approved for us to be a disaster area on, I think it was in March, I can't remember the exact date. But anyway, they have, the federal government has passed a stimulus package. And with that stimulus, they have provided funds to districts to support us during this pandemic. And one of the areas of funding that we're going to have access to is called the Government's Emergency Education Relief Fund. We received, Kentucky received approximately $30 million for the entire state. Fat County's allocation is $1.9 million. Those funds are going to be good through September of 2022. And we also are receiving another fund, we're calling it ESER, and it's elementary and school, secondary school relief funds. And I believe the state received approximately $194 million statewide. And Fat County's allocation is roughly $11.1 million. Next slide. These funds were awarded using the Title I formula. And prior to receiving these funds, the superintendent must assure, complete an assurance document in the GMAP system. And we actually completed the GERS assurance today. And we must, the ESER assurance will not be available probably until sometime later in the week or next week. And we must provide a spending plan by June 30th of this coming year. The funds will be, we will access the funds through the federal cash request process, meaning that as we spend down the dollars, we'll request reimbursement quarterly. This is the same process that we use with all of our other federal funding. But they are fast-tracking our funds, so we should have used to them fairly quickly than what we normally would in a normal situation. Next slide. As I said before, many completed the assurances for the GERS funds today. We expect the ESER funds, the assurances to go live sometime this week. And then we will begin our work. But the GERS, we have been provided a little bit of guidance on how those funds are to be spent. And basically, it's for remote learning, digital learning with expanded food services to students. And they provided a funding matrix for districts to follow. And the same is true for ESER funds. We're going to be given a little bit more flexibility. But those funds also, we must adhere to the funding matrix and they are to help districts overcome barriers created by the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide. There's been a lot of talk on how we reopen school. I know you, all of you have been involved in lots of conversations. And one of the comments that we have heard is, oh, we're going to have to lower class size and add more staff. So we went in and did some research just to see what that might look like. Because I think the maximum people in the room, is it 17 people? Fifteen, between 15 and 17?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. So we were including a teacher and an aide, so we felt like the ratio would need to be at least 15 to one. And so we currently have 37 schools with enrollment of approximately 20,475 students with approximately 1,176 teachers. Our current staffing policy ratio, that we're already at cap in our staffing policy, which is 24 to one for our K3, 28 to one for fourth grade, and 29 to one in fifth grade. The average Title I school's ratio is 18 to one, that's just an average, some of them are lower, some of them are higher. But to take all elementary schools to 15 to one, we would need to hire an additional 546 teachers at a cost of $33 million. That's just at the elementary level. Next slide. We have 12 middle schools.
Jelaine.
Yes, sir.
One question for you. You were to do the 15 to one ratio that you talked about there as well for elementary and hire those additional teachers. You don't have enough classroom space for that, do you?
No, 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 that's just the tip of the iceberg. We would have to look at portable space, the additional costs, you know, social distancing on the bus, more buses, I mean, this is just the tip of the iceberg.
No, I got you.
This is illustrative, just to show you sort of the impact.
Right.
Absolutely. This was just the easiest example that we could share, that we had data points that we could share with you. And again, at the middle school level, we have approximately 9,600, 9,600 students with 644 teachers. And their ratios are, is at sixth grade, 29 to one, and seventh and eighth at 31 to one. And the average Title I school is 25 to one. It would take an additional 320 teachers and a cost of $19.5 million to lower the class size at our middle schools. Next slide. We also did this exercise for our high school staffing as well. They have approximately 11,000 students. They're staffed at 31 to one. And for us to lower class size there as well, we would need an additional 353 teachers at $21.5 million. So that's just, just an example of how things are going to cost if we try to move forward in the traditional setting of the classroom as we.
So you're looking at, what, the total about 74, 75 million?
Yes.
Total.
And we have, you know, in essence, we've received $13 million from the federal government. And that's for us to spend over a two-year period of time. Next slide. Okay. So I did want to go over some expenditures, changes that we're expecting for the next school year. The board has approved for a girls STEM program. I believe we're going to start out at K2 and work our way each year up until we get to K8. The program has a total cost of about $1.9 million. I've tried to break down the cost, what makes up those costs so that you could get a better understanding of where we are. As you'll see, about $1 million is the cost of the personnel. We have also startup funds in place, as well as technology. And we had to do some major renovations to the building to get it up to, up to par to be able to accommodate our little ones for next year.
So Jelaine, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt you, just on this piece. So if we look at, the girl STEM program is going to be a recurring cost. But if we look at this breakdown, the startup renovation, technology, will those just be one time for this budget?
Well, okay, well, you got to remember, they're going to increase 150 students per year until they're, until eighth grade, as well as, the startup costs will go down a little bit just because they will be looking at a Section 6 allocation moving forward. But I anticipate as they grow in enrollment, that we will have to help them a little bit each year until they get to full capacity.
Okay. And you think it'll stay around that 2 million mark?
No, I think the renovation, definitely the renovation won't be there next year. And I know that we have plans to put that on the new facilities plan, that we're going to be looking for space to grow that program moving forward. But the renovation will not be there next year.
Okay, thank you.
Personnel costs would go up as we add more staff. Technology for students, if you want to go one to one, and for the outfit of the classroom with more, more teachers. And then the curriculum, of course, as we add another group.
Absolutely.
Shouldn't be 90,000, but it will net to zero.
But the startup will definitely go down a little bit forward. Ms. Stevens gave a presentation earlier in our budget presentations related to our STEAM Academy. I know they're getting excited about getting into their new building. While in the Johnson Building, they had never had the opportunity to have a true high school science lab. So she alluded that they were getting sponsors with donations to help fund that science lab. But we are also contributing a little bit to cover the cost of making sure that they have a state-of-the-art science lab when they move into their new facility. Also, we have an exciting partnership with Locust Trace, with the Thoroughbred Association. And our portion of that is a .5 ag position. So, and they're going to provide the other portion of the .5 moving forward. So I do look for that partnership to grow, but for this year, we're only providing a .5 position. Also, we pay for our Kista, which is our bus, debt service payments from the general fund. And this year's payment schedule has increased approximately $168,000. It fluctuates a little bit up and down every year, but this year, the increase is approximately $168,000. We're also seeing about a 10% increase in our property insurance. And our fleet insurance is also going up just because we've added more buses and that type of thing. We've seen an increase in student needs through our Student 504 process. And we are also in the process of inserting new portables to relieve overcrowding at, I believe it's Jesse Clark in Winburne. We also got changes in transportation costs going on. You know, we're adding the K2 STEM program as far as anticipated, rider increases in the fall. And so we're going to see an increase there in approximately $490,000. We are having the Park Place building come online, as well as, you know, our Lindley Facility. It is where our K2 STEM program is going to be housed, so we're going to have little bodies in there all the time. So we are in looking to see a slight increase in our utility costs for the upcoming school year. I went ahead and put our CERS rates on here because, I mean, I thought it was, I needed to let you guys know. In January, we anticipated of a cost of about $1.3 million of an additional cost to our CERS, which is our county employee retirement system. They had already approved and published the rates, so we knew how much to anticipate. Well, probably about, I don't know, three or four weeks ago, we, they sent us a memo to let us know that they were freezing the rate for the 2021 school year to support districts and county and state retirement systems. So we will not have no cost for CERS increases this year. And we're just so, we're just so appreciative, appreciative, and we're appreciative of their, of the retirement board wanting to support our families and school districts and county municipalities while this pandemic is going on. So with that being said, that brings our total recurring costs for this year up to $3.3 million. We also will be talking about our salary schedules later on this evening. But for a one and a half percent step increase for experience, we always move our, I think we're required by REG to move our employees up in experience every year for certified teachers. And the cost of our step increase would be approximately $3.1 million for a total cost, new cost projected next year of 6.4 million. Next slide. We have also been doing some major research in working through our revenue streams, projected revenue streams for next year. The budget that you have before you, it's not predicated on taking the 4% like you've seen in prior years. Rodney and John and I got together and Rodney Schop did some historical analysis, looking at the tax rates and looking at the difference between the 4% rate and the compensating rate. And we feel like, I mean, if you recall back in September, when you all chose not to raise the rate, not to take the compensating rate, but just to leave it flat, we still realized some revenue for this year. And so Rodney Schop looked at that. And we, we still believe this year that in September, when the rates finally do come in with the assessment change, we believe that there will be an opportunity to generate some additional revenue again this year if we were to leave the rate flat, using the same rate that we have now. Now, we won't know for certain until we have the project assessments, the certifications later on in the summer. But from all historical evidence, we believe that. We have, if you will recall, back in September. If you will recall back in September, when we're when we were working through all of the uh rate changes. I alluded that the budget of the district collects between a ninety six and a ninety eight percent. Collection rate on property taxes a year. And I budget, I I budget very conservatively and I normally budget at the ninety six percent. So anything that we receive over, it helps cover if we're short in other areas. We've already collected approximately four million dollars this year in real property. Uh tax that we did not budget for in September. So unless the property values tank over the next twelve months, we we. Know that that four million dollars will be there again this year.
I just wanted to add, this is based on our assumptions and if these assumptions hold.
That's exactly correct.
And collections.
And collections. Well, you you gotta think, up until two months ago, we had a booming economy. It's not like this is the Great. Depression. We we fully look for, things might be slow, but we look for, I mean, everyone um. Is saying, our economists are saying that they look that there's a possibility that we could rebound fairly quickly once the um. States are opening up again. So a- again, we don't have a crystal ball, but we believe this is the best case uh scenario. Or that that we can provide to you at this point in time. With that being said, in addition to the four million that we uh are about ninety nine percent certain that will be there again next year. We're projecting an additional three million dollars uh from leaving our. Not taking the compensating rate, but leaving our uh rates flat. Uh again, we'll have more information in regard to that in August and September when we receive. Our certifications and we're able to look at them appropriately. But things we do think we know about is our interest, we've already seen a decline. And so we are gonna pull our interest projection in by approximately a million dollars. For our tentative budget for the upcoming school year. And has Rodney and John has already alluded, um we have actually been uh been in contact with our. Um city's finance department as well as Jersey County. Just to see the methodology that they have used in um the criteria that they looked at in um. Doing some projections and we had decided to kind of go along with our methodology that the city has used. And they actually work with some economists over um. The economic development department over at UK to help them with some of their forecasting. And so after talking with them, we decided that we would um kind of use the same methodology that they use. So with that being said, at this point in time, we are projecting about a six million dollar decrease in our O L T tax for next year. Uh it's pretty bleak. It looks like fourteen thousand dol- about fifteen thousand dollars in increase in revenue that we're going to see. In the general fund for the upcoming school year uh related to local taxes. Um the state at the last minute with the COVID going on, they um held us harmless. They held um seat flat, but again, uh we're looking at a uh with seat being flat. And a process and an increase in our assessments. And David O'Neill's office has already indicated that our assess- assessments have grown three to four percent. Uh we are looking at a reduction in SIG next year. Now, we will probably. Make up for some of it because of some growth that we'll see second month. But we do not need to count on that because um the state is probably looking at mid-year cuts next year in revenue. So uh we want to go into it, understanding that we'll probably take the full cut next year. Um the district in the past, we have used flex- flex focus funds to help support our operating budget. And we expect um to do the same this year uh of about five hundred thousand dollars. We are also um as I alluded to earlier. We, the district has received award notification of some federal stimulus dollars to help offset some of the barriers. That COVID nineteen has provided, so with that being said, we are gonna recommend. Uh to use about sixty percent of our allocation for the upcoming school year to support. Our uh to continue to support our instructional initiatives for the upcoming school year. We have also looked at our budget to see what other types of things we might be able to uh reallocate. To offset some of the costs for next year. And so for the twenty twenty one school year, we're gonna suspend our paint crew for the year. Uh our central office, I K S S, um maintenance and operations, uh the warehouse. We have all reduced our operational budgets by approximately five by five percent, which equates to about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, of course, like not some of our non-negotiables, like utilities, insurances, um. You know, share fees, some of the technology infrastructure, those were exempt because, you know, we have to pay for those regardless. But uh there's also some Harrison is opting to reduce. To restructure their instructional day and that will be approximately a hundred uh thousand dollar savings. And we had uh redid some policies surrounding our dual credit and we had uh requested. I believe, uh I I can't remember, I think it was like in two thousand eighteen uh that uh. I wanna say like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars be placed in that account. And looking at the activity that we've had for the last couple of years, we think we can re uh allocate a hundred thousand dollars. But we'll be looking because at that account over the next year because we are encouraging our kids to take advantage of those opportunities.
Two things I jumped in is suspending the summer for paint crew. We'll paint during the year. Number one, number two, Harrison Instruction Day, students will be dismissed at three thirty Monday through Friday. So la- uh this current year, we had dismissal around that two forty five on Wednesday. And for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, around four fifteen, we're gonna go three thirty across the board. And as a result of that, it impacts uh salaries, so that's the savings.
Absolutely.
So uh Jelaine, looking at this, do we um so some of these revenues, we're looking at the CARES Act funds. And some of the reallocations, those are kind of one-time hits? Is that um? So I was kind of playing long, playing long range.
Well, I I'm hoping that we will be able to utilize these funds long enough to get our some of our revenue streams to rebound. But also, we're looking at the guidance of the uh. Of of the use of the funds, like no salaries, no recurring salaries are gonna be placed on here. We're gonna be looking at like possibly like the platform that Mindy uh alluded to earlier. Uh maybe some technology that we need to uh increase. To make sure that we're doing N T I with fidelity. Um and and we're looking at some other things. Now, keep in mind, there there might be some things, uh some recurring expenses that are temporarily. Uh moved to support for the gears to support, but as our revenue streams come on board. Uh come back, we will be moving those back to the general fund. We will, you know, have a, you know, have a reduction plan on how we're going to cover our non-negotiables moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. Uh we do have some one-time items that are, we we know that they're reoccurring is uh. Bob has an uh uh Bob has an opportunity to take advantage of some funds that are available for E-rate projects. And um we are going, we want to support that initiative. I believe for an additional five hundred thousand dollars, he can get up to three to four million dollars in funding. To improve our technology infrastructure and uh support with our um. You know, with our hotspots and that type of thing. And also, as Mindy alluded, I did not know the cost until uh presentation, but. Uh I have a placeholder in there for the online um learning platform that Mindy talked about earlier. And uh keep in mind, we have until June thirtieth to submit a spending plan. To K D E on how these funds are gonna be spent. Uh so we have some time, but uh we wanted to go ahead and throw that out there. Um to let you guys know that we're on it, we're trying to find uh the best possible ways to spend those dollars. Uh to make sure that we're uh touching as many eligible one-time items as possible. And um that way, we don't have to worry about how our reoccurring expenses are gonna be paid once the grant goes away. Next slide. Okay, this is just a big picture with everything on it, that way you can see it side by side. We are gonna provide the i- if 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 we haven't sent the PowerPoint to you yet, we will be providing the PowerPoint to you. Um just so you can. Take it all in to see how we plan on um. Using uh you know, uh using all of our available resources for the upcoming school year. Next slide. So a- as I alluded to earlier, a a general fund, it also includes, uh our tentative budget includes our general fund. Our special revenues, our food service, our capital outlay in our building fund. And uh with all those funds together, our twenty twenty one tentative budget. Is six hundred and eighty six million dollars, five hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and sixty eight. And at this point in time, I know uh we've put a lot on you and it's getting late, but I will take any questions that you all might have.
I would say first, um I wanna commend my team and uh all of our. My colleagues and and uh folks for uh being judicious, understanding the um charge. And I gotta say it again, I'm fiscally conservative. And so for me to, and these are built on assumptions, those assumptions could change. But right now, these are our best assumptions of Vice Chair Daniels. And to be able to hold the tax rate uh flat and to be able to still make the strategic investments. For member law and equity. Be able to support our Promise Academies. Empowerment zone schools, partnership zone schools, still provide the resources for gifted and talented. Uh to go in for our our high asset schools. Um still provide the services to our English learners, for our students with special needs to um. And still be able to bring in innovation and continue to drive equity. Um to open, you know, a new building at fifteen fifty five Georgetown. A road there for uh Success Academy and STEAM to do all those things and still um. Still keep the taxpayers at at the forefront. We understand the times that we're living in. Uh we understand unemployment is at an all-time high, and so again, we wanted to do our part. And not to add to the burden and financial struggle of of our 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 community. But to be responsive, to understand what's going on, um to maintain a flat tax rate, but still meet the needs. Of our diverse uh population of learners and our children and families, so any questions?
It is our contingent, have we reduced our contingency? Cause I'm looking, we're at thirty three, five, is that right?
I reduced it by a million and a half.
Okay, and that's just to accommodate some of those revenue losses?
I think so, and 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 we're still within our six percent contingency.
You need that cushion.
That's exactly correct.
Either we absorb it or you pass it on to taxpayers.
And then I noticed too, we have carry forward on encumbrances. Of I believe it's two million, two point three million. We're expecting less than expenditures on instructional supplies and materials due to carry forward. Do we expect those uh encumbrances? That that much of the encumbrances to be released? Or is that, is does that tend to be the pattern?
Yes, if you look at the report that I presented earlier of Board Member Murphy, you'll see that it was like seven million dollars last year. It's like seven point five, so this is a trend that happens every year. So uh my team has already started digging deep into that and by June, we will have that significant lockdown. I can't say it'd be exactly two point five million, but we would get it um significantly lower than what you see now.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I I think a great job um trying to nail this down with all the moving factors that you have. Uh cause you know, let's be frank, without COVID nineteen, it's hard to nail a budget down. You just gave one example on encumbrances that it's just ironic, idiotic and everything else you can think of. Uh we can't predict, we can't nail that anything. Now, we're very lucky to live in a very, we've had a good economy. And we're in a very uh landlocked situation here, property values have continued to rise and really benefited us. Uh and 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 so I appreciate the cautious nature and I think the only thing for me to watch right now, as we peel through all of this is. Is it wise to use sixty percent of those dollars now and forty percent next year or fifty fifty? You know, we'll we'll look at all those things, but I appreciate Jelaine as as you continue to be very open and John and very honest with us and. Rodney, you've been great at forecasting this every year. Um and uh so. Things are changing, but uh this is a good start. We can look through it and peel through it and definitely generate a lot of questions to go back in your direction, but. A a great stab at, really a great initial stab at all this, great job.
And Jelaine, you've picked a doozy of a year to go out on, so.
I know, I know. If I knew what I knew, if I knew now what I knew, didn't know then, I would, I would have went out at Christmas time. Been watching you guys. Oh goodness. I do not have any more slides, but we need to talk about the uh two thousand twenty twenty one salary schedules for this year. There really isn't many changes, uh there's no um. Incremental increase in the the sales, so the salary schedule itself is the same as it's been. Uh as it was last year. The only changes that are actually as part of the document, I believe I sent a cover memo on. And um on page two, we were just doing some clarifying language. Related to uh college hours outside of your degree or rank. And how those are are paid, we were just giving some clarification on those. And then also, last year we added um language to the salary schedule related to our Promise Academies. And this year Harrison's doing something a little different, so we just went ahead and uh updated. Uh the changes in there related to the Promise Academies. And we are adding a district um middle school dance rep, that's about eight hundred dollars. Um I guess we've seen an increase in that sport over the years and we feel like we need. One person to work with uh our other coaches across the district. Uh and also um there are clarifying language back on page twenty four. We've more clarifying language on how uh what happens when. A classified hourly employee moves to a salary position. Related to experience, um certifications, maybe they've gotten um. Paid for in the past and that type of thing. So actually, those are the only changes, very minor changes this year. Uh so I'll answer any questions that you may have.
And I'm assuming none of those changes would be retroactive? But or for the, okay.
Uh they they would begin, I mean, they would begin probably July one.
Kind of retroactive.
Yes.
You're correct for them, Murphy.
Okay, is there, is that a state regulate, is there a reason why we've changed the fifteen uh hour? Cause if I'm reading this correctly, so if you have your masters, if you're a teacher, for example, certified teacher and you have your master's degree. But you have fifteen hours of additional coursework that was not required for your masters. Uh but it was related to the field of. uh, but it was related to the field of your master's, then you wouldn't give the master's plus fifteen to rank two point two, is that, is that right?
I'm gonna defer to Jennifer since she, uh, her shop.
Yeah, good, good evening. Um, it is still in place. The confusion and part of the clarifying is there are times that people take additional hours within a degree. And there have been times that employees, um, have read that and have felt that if I took some extra hours within my master's degree, I should be awarded that fifteen hours bump up. And it's outside your master, so it's not a change, and that's still being awarded. It's just to clarify that you do your master's degree. And then this is an additional fifteen hours outside of that master's degree. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's, i- is that current, is that a state regulation? Is that our current policy, and we're just clarifying?
That, that's just clarifying our current, our, our current processes. The state regulation does not require a every-year step. It only requires the ranks. It does not require the plus fifteen. That is a advantage that the Board of Education has applied to Fayette County in employees, which is a great, um, incentive for recruitment and retention as well, to be able to have those bump ups.
Okay, so when we say outside of the degree, it could still be like, so if I have a master's in history, I could still have fifteen hour, I could get fifteen additional hours in history courses. I would be eligible for that, uh, two point two rank, is that right?
That is correct. If you completed your master's degree, and then you took additional coursework outside of that master's, it, it could be in the same related field, but it couldn't be that, oh, I had started in this one degree and I started taking some courses. And by the time I finally got a degree, I had some extra courses in there, so I'm gonna get my fifth, I'm gonna get a master's degree. But I also want you to count some of those courses towards fifteen hours. That's what this is clarifying.
Okay.
Is that you have your master's degree, and then outside of that master's degree, in a, it can be in a related field, a very similar field, it could be a little different depending on what it is.
Okay. And, and then my next question is on page, uh, the, the page twenty-four reference that Julian mentioned, where it talks about classified salaried and certified employees, uh, will carry all of their F C P S experience. And then it strikes the language as well as any outside experience. So that, uh, it's only their experience in F C P S that would qualify for the step, for the experience steps?
And related. So if you had related outside experience, it certainly would, uh, cr- would count. That was in there, go two places, so that's why we struck that through on that particular page for clarifying language. But any of your Fayette County experience would carry with you, um, to a classified salaried position. And certified, as you know, there's very strict regulations on what would count towards certified experience. So a lot of times the classified hourly will not count towards certified, uh, a salaried position.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, seeing no questions, I wanna thank you team and board members.
I did have a quick question. Is Myron Thompson, not Myron, is, uh, Darrell Thompson still online? Darrell still online?
Yes, he's still on.
Yeah, I did have a question for you. Uh, I know Manny, you've been speaking about the stability of our families, uh, and really trying to make sure that, um, we don't have the Hollywood Shuffle this summer where people move around and try to find stable rent, not paying their rent. Darrell, how well are we getting out the information? Community Action most recently has some rent relief programs. I've heard there's more rent relief grants that are gonna be out there. How well and what vehicle are we using to get that out to our families?
So Doug Adams is our point of contact, uh, for ensuring, uh, those families are in the highest state of, um, distress, and I guess, in this case, um, housing insecurity. Um, he and his, Doug's office monitors that, so, um, I will probably yield to Doug. Uh, we both collaborate weekly on ensuring that we keep a pulse of.
And seeing where how hard it is, Community Action's having a hard time giving away the fund, they gotta spend this grant.
Yeah, we talked about that on Friday, uh, in our meeting, about how we can, uh, create a a real intentional plan to make sure those families that have the greatest need are getting it. And, um, so Doug and I will talk, um, uh, before our Thursday meeting with the superintendent, uh, to make sure, and Miranda as well is tuned in to the needs of families through the United Way. So we have that collaboration going on, uh, through Timothy Johnson.
Okay.
His team to keep a pulse of, of those needs. Um, when we spoke on Friday with the group, uh, one of the takeaways was to make sure that we create a service delivery approach, uh, that leverages all of the funds, uh, particularly knowing, uh, certain people have an opportunity of seeing it first, uh, so that we can redirect it to those families that we know, um, typically have stood in line for a long time to be served. So, um, we'll make sure we get those, that done.
Alright, thanks, man. That's all I had. Thank you.
And just, uh, for the board and viewing public, we also, through the gracious, um, support of the Matthew Mitchell Foundation, had, uh, used those resources specifically to help families in distress with rent, utilities, et cetera, out of our student support, um, uh, service office. So we've been doing that as well. Um, and so it's great to have others, we're others on board, um, to support Community Action Council, and others, uh, to provide that relief in these times of extreme distress for families. Uh, so, continue, continuing, um, our agenda this evening also includes several informational items, including the school activity fund report, uh, the tentative budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, or F Y twenty-one, personnel changes from May, the inter-fund transfer report, and the position control document. At this time, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Madam Chair. We do not have a need to go into closed session this evening.
Do I have any additional board requests at this time?
Yeah, the, I know that we've talked about this before, uh, just, is there any way that soon, maybe, um, before our next planning meeting or at our next planning meeting, um, we kind of have an update on calendar discussions, just so we know what to be thinking about, as well as, um, uh, contingencies for, uh, where we are as far as the recommendations that K D E released about reopening.
So Tyler, there's a, the Think Tank has multiple committees going, um, and they are operations, academic support, ca- you know, all these things. They have indicated they will have some information to us by the first of June. That's the deadline that they've kind of set themselves, and I know that the superintendent has instructed the staff to, that's on this committee, to make this their top priority now. Um, the different committees are currently recruiting committee members that are stakeholders and are community partners to make sure that everyone is involved. Um, there's, and so I know, um, they, they've actually been kind of copying me on all their work, so I know that all this work's coming, but I wanted to kind of give you that update is, and I know the June first is when they plan to have something to us as a board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we won't be able to have an update, uh, on Tuesday, when we meet again on the twenty-sixth at one thirty P M. But we have an update that'll be in June as to the Think Tank and the work that they're doing around re-envisioning, reimagining, and renewing.
Okay, okay, that, that would just be helpful. And the only reason I mention it, as I know there's a lo- a lot of uncertainties, but it just helps us to all be on the same page and kind of know what we can anticipate, so we're not, we're not blindsided by anything, especially this summer.
Yeah, right now I'm finding people that everything's on the table and nothing's off the table, and no decisions have been made.
No, no, I think one of, one of the, um, points of illustration in the budget that I intentionally, uh, asked my team to add was the student-teacher ratio. And if you were to go to fifteen to one, what that impact would be, elementary thirty-three million. And I think Tyler, you did sort of a back in the napkin estimate into sixty, seventy million dollars. And Board Member Love already said we don't have the physical space, right, classroom. So as we're thinking about, and as you think about, um, as, as board members and members of our community, you're trying to follow the guidelines, adhere to the guidelines, the current guidelines, K D E, the C D C, um, and our local health department. You're talking about social distancing, you're talking about, um, creating, uh, uh, the, maintaining that social distance, maintaining, um, mask and, 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 and other safety measures to help mitigate the spread of, of COVID nineteen. And so, you know, we wanted to, again, illustrate that, uh, work to do this with our, our current resource load that we have and, and, and human capital. And so, um, that should help. I guess putting that out there, as, as someone may say, once you just hire more teachers or hire more staff, what does that look like? So I wanted to give you that information as you engage with the public. Um, I'm sure they have some, uh, opinions and, 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 and suggestions about the direction a district should take as we, uh, look to reopen.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no additional questions, I will entertain a motion to make the agenda dated May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, on which action has been taken at the meeting as part of the minutes, as if copied in the minutes verbatim. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, sorry, I'll make the agenda dated May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, on which an action has been taken at this meeting as, as a part of the minutes, as if copied in the minute verbatim, sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sec- second by Mr. Daniels. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed, motion passes five zero, and at this time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Not everybody at once, so I have a motion about Mr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Murphy. All, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, board. Thank you, team.